We make this meeting to order. Okay, thank you. Welcome. Um, I am calling uh. Our January fifth twenty twenty three special meeting with the linkage with our legislators to order at uh Bible two. Uh, welcome to our s- our food more meeting. I uh Senator Wellman, sir, and Representative Sun. We're super excited to have you here. We'll we'll do a quick run intros of our for us. And then I uh I think we as a board, we'd love to hear your your highlights from the few. From the two of you first as part of the intro and what's uh. What's interesting for students and children uh in the second up ahead. So take a few minutes to give us that after the intro and. Uh then we'll go through our questions. So I will uh. I will start and David Susan, this is my uh starting my year on the board. So excited to have you here and we will go to my president.
Uh Dan Loitz uh with my second here.
Maggie Tiger, um beginning of my fourth year. Uh double brewery and uh six years on. And Dan beginning my fourth year.
Andrew Howson, and this is my second here on the board.
Um Asha Water is my first year through the students program.
Uh Andrew, oh, I'm sorry. Andrew Montreux, Andrew, your third formers. And Michelle.
And Michelle.
I'm sure you're busy in in communications, social media. And.
Uh Matt Sullivan, uh four months, new executive director of finance and operations district.
Aaron Batters, the executive director of finance. These were the second question or so.
Brett Rongel, superintendent for our school district, and Ian's doing some additional filming tonight. We are working on different ways to. Do highlights for board meetings. So we're 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 not sure exactly how things are working. We've tried a few different things, but that's.
So and then uh yeah, good luck here kind of I love. We'll talk about this island later. Uh but love to be here in Ireland. What uh? What's uh what you're interested in for students and children? Uh Senator Wellman.
I have so much to talk about, of course, uh but um. I don't know if you're aware that this year I traveled to Finland to study their education system. And just meet with a number of different uh companies that are involved in game application and games for education. And to see what the rest of the world is doing. And um the rest of the world is doing a lot. Uh and we are not, you know, we're not playing catch up. Um but we definitely are not way out ahead of anybody else, that's for sure. And it was really quite fascinating. I I will just share a little bit. There is, hopefully you have had the opportunity to. Pull down the report that I did. It's about a thirty five page report that talks about not only my experiences in Finland, but also. Again, the experiences as I travel around the state visiting other school districts. So that I get, you know, the sense of what's happening in where it's happening and and again, how how things are. In recovery or coming back or just happening in other places and getting a feel for uh school districts around the state. Um as I say, you know, while I'm born from the forty first, I have one point five million kids that are my constituents. Making sure that when they need the systems that they're in, that they're ready for whatever that next step is for them. And a couple of things, well, I certainly found out from Finland. That your school district is really uh very uh reflective of the culture that it's based in. And if you have got a culture of trust, which they certainly do, um then that's the basis of their school district. Um their school teachers, most of them are master's degrees, as frankly many of ours are, hope not most of them. They're not paid more than um our school teachers, but of course they come out of college with no debt. And they have been paid a uh a fee for for being in college so that they have somebody to live on while they're in college. Uh they also have training in uh learning disabilities and all the other kinds of things, whereas many of our teachers. Who have um I E P based kids in their classrooms have really not had that training. And so that brought back a reflection for me that one of the touch points that I need to concentrate more on. Is making sure that our prep schools in this state. But I can't do it elsewhere, but in this state are really keeping up with what we're doing within the school system. So that if we're focused on mastery based education, um then they have to be trained to fit into that. Uh uh pedological, you know, construct. And um not sure that that's the case. So that's really a double dip that I'm I'm doing, looking looking at that. Um. So I have brought back a lot of interest in um. In games for education, and that was what I based my committee days meeting on. I had Dr. J G. I hope you'll have a chance to see his podcast, um because he is kind of. Illuminary in this area and I I was so pleased. He said, well, you seem to be fighting a good fight. Okay, I'll show up. He showed up. And and he he talked about, you know, games in the education and how. And I I really like the story that he told that um. Here's a game that he he introduced and said, this the basis of this game is you have to make physics work. And so whatever you're doing in this game to win the game, it's it's a physics. In in interaction. And so when you do that and and get engaged, when you finally take physics, it's like. I know what this is. I know what it feels like. And so that was really, I could see how it fits together, and it's a really exciting way to engage young people. Um to that that extent, we will be uh doing more of. Uh launching esports in the state of Washington, which I think is going to be really exciting. And something, you know, kind of in the case we get excited about, and of course support for first one first Washington robotics that. I've always been a champion of and um. We continue to put a little more uh uh focus there. I am setting up my office. Not quite probably as sexy as this is, but I am setting it up so that I can do podcasts, because I think. That we need to get good information out, engage people and anybody here who wants to be in one of my podcasts. Coming down to Olympia or whatever uh to talk about whatever, I'd be happy to, you know, consider that. I I think that actually. I'll share with you the the words that I've been using, frankly. Based on some of my experiences around the state is that I'm in the process of pre-bunking. Pre-bunking because before they bunk and then we have to debunk, it's easier to pre-bunk. So that's kind of what I'm doing, trying to lay out the various things about our state. You don't like. Here, so I'm doing videos and I'm going to be doing it in podcasts of. You know, we have what is considered the gold standard for um elections in the state of Washington. And so when I go around the state and people talk about, you know, that we have illegal elections and we've certified some illegally or whatever. They have no idea of, you know, what we've done, so I'm trying to share that information. Um. So that's just a little. I'm just giving a little flavor here. I've got lots of bills. I've prefiled, I think, almost twenty bills now, but. Yeah, I've been busy. Wow. So but I but I'll talk about that, because I'm sure you're interested in detail later.
Thank you.
Um yeah, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Representative Sun and I chair the Human Services Youth and Early Learning Committee. So last year it was called the Children, Youth and Families Committee, added the safety net, developmental disabilities and. Uh excited to highlight youth and not just um early learning and not just when kids get uh involved in the criminal justice system, but just youth in a healthy. Sort of ways. I'm excited about um the new jurisdiction and that's the thing in the in the committee. And then I still serve on the budget committee called appropriations. And this year I'm on the Innovation Community and Economic Development and Veterans Committee. So that's a new committee for me and I'm excited about that as well. So um. One of the things that I was focused on this interim was really looking in this space. Was really looking at uh developmental pre-K. And um as kids come out of um. Preschool or childcare or Easton, uh the. Early Services for Infant and Childish Program, where do they go to next and what is that intersection with the school districts? What does uh developmental pre-K really mean and look like? And it's kind of a little bit of a hodgepodge or a misnomer for people who say pre-K and it's not really a. Program, it's more of a bucket or a category. Um and so as I dug into that issue. And what really also came to the forefront with that, a lot of young. Um kids takes a long time for them to get evaluated and to get their I E Ps because they. Even if you're three and four, you go to the school district for those um I E Ps and evaluations. And especially with COVID, you have more and more young kids who did not have those early learning experiences or hitting those developmental milestones. And so there'll be more and more kids who probably need some extra help, at least in their early. Um years of schooling. So. Uh developed a bill. Uh in particular to help address, to bring some uh early learning, or sorry, to bring some um early funding. To the summers for school districts to do those evaluations and I E Ps over the summer. So when kids start school in September, they actually have their I E Ps. They're ready to go. You have a summer birthday. You don't have to wait until um September to start your process. You can, you know, you can go the the full way um and get your evaluation I P on on time and in a developmentally appropriate. Timeframe. So I'm really excited about that. Um and another component of um. Uh of that conversation. Again, those kind of talking about disabilities also talk about the issue of um emergency expulsions. Which um a lot of times kids with disabilities might be expelled from a behavioral issue or some other um, you know, outburst. Or there might be a fight on campus and in some these emergency expelled. But really that's, they're not expelled. They're just emergency expelled, which is not expelled. It might be, but it might not be, which is very confusing for people, I think for kids, for the public, for schools. And so we're changing that to emergency removal, which I think is what it truly is. The emergency removal and then there's some time to figure out if that child should be expelled, suspended, or maybe nothing. And they were just. Abate them or they were having a moment that they needed some kind of way. And so now there's not a limit on their record or on their psyche. Or on the teachers uh impression of them. So that uh also came out of my work looking at kids with disabilities and and uh focusing on that area. And then on a on a different side, uh really thanks to initial conversation with um. Uh school board member Laurie a few years ago and started looking at electric school buses. And we did the change last year to allow uh the transportation subsidies to focus and use money for electrification and electric school buses. This year I'm working on a bill to require by twenty thirty five, all school buses must be zero emission. And um that's when we already said that all uh cars that are on the um on the lot. Have to be sold as electric. So we're gonna do that for school buses too. And um and help school districts who want to get there earlier. With grant funding for uh charging stations or for their school buses that go above and beyond the depreciation. Schedule for those buses. So really looking from a uh environmental way, a health way for our children. To get um as moving in that direction of zero emission school buses. So excited about that environmental intersection. Uh with uh education as well. So those are um. Uh and another issue is around transitional kindergarten, but Mercer Island doesn't. Have transitional, so I think I'll give that one. Um but that is um those are some of the things that I'm working on and to focus on this intro.
Thank you very much. That was that's an amazing overview. Uh what in state has been super innovative and I think that's a lot due to our educational system. So uh. Really appreciate all the work you're doing. Love their global view as well as the uh. Pre-K view, we know that as impact our school district. Uh it's great.
And President, you you asked the question that I'll either of us answer. Sorry, I'm. That what are we doing this section?
Yeah.
Uh when it's very little question and it's very, very, very broadly, I think the biggest issues are housing. Behavioral health, uh to me, especially children's behavioral health. Uh um and special education. And I think without a doubt, those three things rise to the top of. What we need to to be focused on um and certainly continuing on our road for climate change and. Racial equity and fiscal uh equity are, you know, changes in our tax code. But I think among those, I would say housing, behavioral health and special education. Um are probably the top three issues. Um yeah.
So I was doing the shoesy part now I'll get down to this. Um so yes, I'm sorry, I'm sure I'm early way to get to twelve education. Uh this will be my sixth year of doing that and um I am also sitting on energy, environment and technology. Um and in technology, of course, keeping the focus on broadband. Uh looking at blockchain technology um and the usefulness of that and a couple of other things uh that I would evolve with. Um. And then I also sit on ways and means. And so the question is, you know, making sure that we get the money, get the bill, but. We don't get the true ways. Um and and then, you know, it seems like what ways is the end of the process and then. It goes into negotiations that I don't even yet just sit in it. And and other things change, but let me give you a sense of some of the some of the easy things that um I'm I'm doing is. You know, as you may know, that in the state of Washington, uh doesn't require you to start elementary school until you're eight years old. And so this I will be running a bill to start it at six, uh which is somewhat a compromise. I think. Personally, I think it should be at five because we we know the value of early learning and that early education and to say that. You shouldn't, you know, formally, you don't need to start until six, but um that that was. Uh I think the compromise that that I was willing to make, you know, in that area. In terms of, you know, some other things that I think you're particularly interested in, um there. There will be a bill that I put forward for special education, which changes of the cap. Um I do believe that there needs to be a cap because part. Candidly, we have seen without a cap, we have no accountability. I need to, we need to know the numbers. We need to know what's what. And um it also, I think to some extent, we know that there are many children, certainly BIPOC children. Who are in um special education because that's an easy out. And it's like you're disrupting your special education because the numbers just just know that. So I I I'm changing cap from thirteen to fourteen. Thirteen point five to fourteen point five. But the bill that you see, I think will be a vehicle for looking at a number of other things, which will be the multiplier that we use. Um my senses will adjust that some, and then we have to look at at the safety, you know, the safety net that we're doing. We're also running a proviso. I don't know, frankly, I perhaps should know, but I don't know if you have any children. Uh special education children out of state, but we have about eighty children in the state who who. Are sent to other places. Um and we're, you really need to have a better understanding of. What exactly are they getting in these other places? I know that we may have to change. Certain things in the state of Washington to bring them back here and treat them back here because we do have a a regulation. Can that that simply is that you can. Uh if you're thirteen years or older, you could exit from a um mental health facility on your own recognizance kind of thing. And that may not work with some of the kids that really shouldn't be allowed to do that. Um for their own health, you know, health and safety, uh as well as the communities. So we have to really understand who is. Out there. It's it's not a huge, huge amount of money. It's uh eight, if you want, the kids is, I think it's thirteen million dollars a year, but. So each child is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. One of the things that we'll do, if you have a child who's out of state. You usually have to front the money and then we reimburse and after some. School districts that have several kids, this is a lot of money to put out there. So we'll we'll reimburse quarterly. And that will, I think, to help in some extent. Um so special ed definitely we're looking at as as uh represents it. Uh putting, really addressing it much more um. Appropriately uh with real costs and and, you know. I think also making the statement that we understand that this is really a critical, important phase that we have to or or uh issue that we have to address. Um, one of the, there's two major bills I know you're going to be interested in and. And then Dan has contacted me about one of them and that is uh the rebasing. Teacher salary issue. Um. OSBI has put forth something that I'm not feeling very comfortable with. And also, you know, in spending a lot of time looking at how we're funding teacher salaries. It has been funded in strange ways and and that I don't think really reflects. A vision that what we of what we have about where we want education to go and what we want to support. Um, you know, and I do appreciate teachers who have. Degrees and and have. Continued their education, um as I would any employee and I've had many employees, people working for me. Um also people who have been in the system for a good amount of time, that is is a value. Um that doesn't mean that they're the best teacher, just means that they have been a good teacher for a period of time and and and, you know, like the work. But I think if we are doing an evolution and looking to transform our system to mastery based. Uh more mastery based, uh project based learning, where we say that there are certain things, we we think um. By leaving an education is really important. Are we, are we putting our money where our values are when we look at the portrait of the graduate and where we want our kids to, you know, to go? Um, are we, are we recognizing a twenty first century economy as a digital economy? But do we want people in our system who really can take his with, you know, digital citizenship with digital uh fluency, et cetera? And so are are we looking to reimburse on the basis of our values and our vision? Or are we just plugging in numbers? And and so I really want to get to the point where we're aligning that. So we do have to do a rebasing. Uh my sense is it's it's at six percent. Um and I want to frankly keep our visualization factors where they are, rebased at six percent as we have to do. And step back and look at what we really want to do with our values and our vision for education. And and spend some time on that, because I don't see that happening yet.
And so one of the things that I was thinking about, um both in regards to visualization and also um Representative Sun. If I'm on early like a pre-K, it is best art for kids. When you have funding tied to programming, um I think that makes sense. It's tied to actual outcomes. And I I I there's community support. I remember attending a best art for kids. Call and uh former mayor Wong was on it. I'm not sure if like you, David, were. I know there's another like a school board member. And like several others, perhaps like uh one or both of you. Uh Ron, but it's like Mercer Island is overrepresented. Uh because we recognize that we're not an island. We were connected by two bridges and I think there's um saying be proud of. Is uh that we're part of a broader community. Um but I I think when it comes to visualization and questions like how to adjust like formulas. Make sure it's tied to data and programming. Um and that there's substance behind it. Um and that it's not disruptive without justification.
Well, and I hope we can do a visualization for our local levies too. That if, you know, we're more expensive, right? And some of our areas, ends of our local. Dollars, um you know, if we're supposed to make sure that our teachers get a raise, well. If we have that, um if we hire a teacher with the local levies and those teachers should get a six percent raise too, but that comes out of direct as a levy only. And not if we don't regionalize the local levies, then we're, you know, we're just always, we're always losing money.
I also think that classifieds that needs a need a reason. We have to look at that. Um so I'm I'm planning on um. Dressing that and uh feeling comfortable about doing that. I mean, it's really important. So because. So there's that. Um. The other big one is transportation, the transportation formula. Um and so I know that there has been work done. We I've sent it back three times now. Um with a, yeah, not good enough. I don't like what I'm seeing. So where we are now, and I think we're pretty close, so. We'll see what kind of amendments come through on the bill. Is a program that really addresses, first of all, the fact that. The transportation system, when you're in these, some of our regional areas, I always think of the that's a school district because. They're, they've got mountains everywhere, so their their routes are just very challenging. You can't be efficient. Uh if you don't want kids sitting on a bus for two hours. Um so uh there's that. Then there's C A Seattle, which has a real dense urban area. So you can't apply the same thing to that. And so the bill actually, as it is now, and it's. It will be filed. You should be able to see it in the next couple of days, um actually addresses the fact that there are differences. We're going to go forward on on some basis, but nobody will be less than they are now. Um to start with. And then it it possibly more and Mercer Island, I try to look out for you guys, so I know it's going to be more. But I also want to make sure, I was really surprised when I attended the meeting of. Of the Skill Center, the Association of Skill Centers, that. It's kind of an iffy thing as to whether their transportation dollars are paid or not. So that, yes, they will, if if we're talking about skill centers as being a valuable part of gen-. General education, we those kids back and forth, that is paid for, so that will be added. To it. Uh then where we also are looking at young people in work integrated learning are going to jobs, that's included the payment for that. And finally, the bill that I had last year that we didn't get through, but is to look at. The special group of 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 transportation that doesn't ride the school buses. And so that is your special ed kids that are fragile and can't ride the school bus. As well as the given mental homeless kids and your foster kids. For whom this is their, this would be their home school. We want them to come to school. You have to go and get them from someplace else, some other district. And so that whole group that I just described is paid just outright whatever the cost is to you. So I know. Uh because I I've made sure to come here with a number of three hundred forty three thousand dollars more than you're getting now. Plus what you might get if you do special, the special education group. Um will pay that directly, whatever the cost is for that. So. At least, you know, kind of moving forward, you're not better, you're not worse often than you were before, um as far as those two things are concerned. Um. And um. Principals, that was an interesting thing to learn, that principal, by law, principal contracts are only one year. That doesn't make any sense. So we're opening that up and you can have multiple years for your principles. Um. And there's quite a number of other things, there's a lot of other things, but those are the most unique ones that um. Seem to me to be. My mind.
Thank you. Uh thank you for that. Over. You covered uh many of the topics we also plan to cover.
Okay.
Uh so uh very quickly, we'll start with. We've got, we've got four topics, special education, the prototypical school funding model, uh levy authority and and visualization factors. We touched on every one of them, but I will give an opportunity for. Director, students and staff to, if they have any questions, let's start with uh special education first. I think it will move you maybe just a real quick, uh will be your one we're paying in the. Levy right now, some of the complexities around it might be, might be helpful to share.
Um last year, we entered um four point one seven million. Uh. I know this is, we're doing, we're out on our presentation, uh right now, uh out of our local um. Of our local dollars, so about eleven and a half million total for special education. In about seven, a little over seven million for state and federal. Um. Some of that has to do with uh just the delta in the prototypical school model, um that's tied to that. Um some of it has to do with our out of state students, you know, we are a district that does have some of those. And then also when are we recouping dollars? Um and I know that Sue Man, uh who we have worked with, uh your staff are giving you some information, so you're well on on that. So. Um those are some, a couple of numbers that come to mind. Um. There's so many others in terms of dollars on that.
And on the number that you gave me, uh you have gone and up here what you could get from the safety net.
We do, yes. We are a benefit, we benefit greatly from safety net. Um. And I give full credit to our staff who does an exceptional job on making sure we're complying with our I E Ps. Um we know that that process is very arduous. Um and it's under tight scrutiny all the time, but we did recoup. Uh million and one point two million last year for safety net or one point four million for safety net.
So then, yeah, I think about thirty percent of our local levies go to special education funding and. As you point out, that's problematic, it's caused to increase because of lending adjustment.
I think one of the other things to point out is districts get known from being sort of special ed, yeah, special education. Um to like a, I know one district when it comes to to that, it is. Um to become a magnet school.
Yeah.
And others in perhaps more general, but there's a reputation. And I think that's something that we can be proud of, Mercer Island is a reputation for being a very good district for special education. But as a result, um. You can have higher costs because like there is a. Uh parents want to come into the district um to receive those services. So when looking across districts, I think, um I I don't know what the data shows, but I can see there being large variances amongst. So when looking across districts, I think, um, I I don't know what the data shows, but I can see there being large variances amongst school districts. Um, because of this specialization, um, factor.
So and and I think that's why you see that I'm I'm adjusting, uh, helping your poster, adjusting the, uh, the cap of of. Four to fourteen point five percent of the total education, you know, of the educational population. Um, but for some schools, if that cap is irrelevant, it doesn't work.
You guys aren't in the cap.
No, it doesn't matter.
So that's why I'm looking at the multipliers, right? Cause that is a lot of issues. So if I, if we, if we adjust all the different levers that we can. A little bit, it should help everyone and and there's definitely, um, support for that this year. I mean, it is as as. As I said, it's the time for special education to be addressed appropriately.
And particularly the multiplier, and sort of going back to my earlier point about certain districts becoming a reputation. Uh, for being, you know, particularly good in an area, then you can have higher needs with a higher cost per student.
Right.
Um, as a result of that.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not sort of, um, a uniform of the cost of it, right?
And then paying for your out of state kids directly, whatever their cost is. You know, kind of making sure and paying it more frequently, I think that would be somewhat helpful.
And then the, you know, the, uh, increase in the cap, just something that as you're having conversations with your colleagues, even though it doesn't impact us. Um, we did go over ten percent for the first time, um, in many, since I've been in the district. And it's less about, yeah, we are, we do have, we have a qualifying students, but the bigger factor is. Um, our students receiving special services are not the students who have left to go to private school during COVID. So that end has stayed the same, but our, our device around the bottom has dropped. And so our, it it looks like we're qualifying all these students. It's not as much that as the numbers have just changed. So, um, I think that will help other districts by. Raising that a little bit, but recognizing that some of the increases are not because we're qualifying more students, just. We have less students in the total and and the same amount of students in the area we're in.
So let's, uh, move on to the prototypical, prototypical school funding model. Any, uh, thoughts from directors?
I, uh. I'll, I'll say something. I'm, I'm a person of the model. Um, you know, I think that one of the things that. Uh, when I first, you know, we we moved into this position and started to examine, you know, kind of what did it mean and what is a prototypical. What each interval model mean, which of course is how the money goes out, but not necessarily how it's spent. Because we have local control, so you would get the money for this and pay it over here. The one thing that we did last term, uh, session was to look at, uh, the money that was going out for that group of of people in the counselors, the. The social workers, the nurses, et cetera, psychologists. And the fact that this money that we're raising and that will go up and should hit this year, start to raise that, that version of a model. Um, that money has to be spent for that, which you were spending in that and more, I know already. But, um, was spending for that. If you will see a bill on that, which is a somewhat of an adjustment, just in the correction. Because the way the bill was originally written, I just want you to be aware of this, the way the bill was originally written included. Um, some safety supports, which some, uh, were were able to take to being that that included money for S SROs and CROs. And it did not, the intent was not that. So we're gonna close that loop. The other thing that I think is really important is when I look at the four hundred to one ratio of our counselors to students. Um, you know, and and I hear the stories, uh, well, I went into my counselor and they said, you know, what do you think you'd like to be with, you know, what are your, what are your intentions to? Well, I was thinking maybe of going into business and business, right? You're good. Go, you know, you're done. Because at four hundred to one, I mean, how much attention and time can you give? So one of the things that I'm working on is, and I have been passionate about this for a long time. We have the technology, but we are not using it as effectively as we could. And so I'm hoping to move forward with a new, um, high school and beyond plan that is online, that essentially is a. Um, not only your, what are your transcript or your portfolio or whatever that is, but also is an exploratorium. In other words, are you in boy scouts, girl scouts? Are you in a church group? Do you sing in a choir? Um, do you, are you a horseback rider or ballet? You know, do you enter contests? What do you, really, that's, we'll start, you know, middle school up, but also going back eventually to to, um. Or elementary school, so that when you're looking at this new high school beyond, like, I'm seeing the whole person. You're seeing the passions and things that have interest in them, and it has to be really more reflective of who we are. And I think that, um, what we're hearing from from employers as well, um, as we look at transcripts versus, um. The idea of of having a portfolio, which is mastery based portfolio, what we hear again and again is. This tells me what you did one day at one time, you got this grade, and this tells me what you can do. And that's very valuable to me as an employer. And so, um, I think that that helps the student find something that they're passionate about, that they can do well. And I think as we go on, we're going to see more and more interesting, unique jobs that are going to require different sets of skills. And I think this is gonna be a great tool for that.
One of the things, oh.
It's okay. I have a question that's kind of related to that. Um, in your report, you have this nice little like pattern, pattern talking about, about the fact that. The students in Finland are easily able to track the, you know, more academic track and more practical and vocational based track. And I just wonder whether there's any kind of like learning you can take away from that that might help us think differently about our CPR program and having those funds better. Like we just built a really lovely culinary arts classroom, right? And we've been, people have been kicking around ideas about like, could you have, you know, chemistry for cooking, for example, that kind of thing. I'm just curious what you have.
I love the idea that, you know, kind of there is, where we have had for many years, let's face it, we said, there's this at the academics. And then someplace down here is this other, and they, and they really call it theoretical and applied science. And and which takes away from one being higher than the other. It's, it's just different. And I think we're going in that direction and I do see very much that that's a path to the future. We already see changes. In our, in our college systems. Um, I, I, it just doesn't make any sense to me that you can go to college for two years and have to drop out in your college dropout. You're not having an AA, you're not having a certificate in, I don't know, uh, you know, some kind of thing that you spent two years doing. Whatever. So I think colleges are looking at it differently. I also think that when we did the, spent a lot of time on developing the, the portrait of a graduate, we've been looking at. We talked about, and I said this before, I think to you, but we've looked at, you know, lifelong learning and it's like, yes, you know, come on. People don't even read a book after they graduate, many people. But they're going to have to, because you're going to have to be certified. You're going, we have to be lifelong learners. You're not gonna do something for the next forty years. It's just not the way the world is. Um, the other thing I will tell you that I'm very excited about, which is tangential to the soul conversation, but but it was really interesting, like.
I have a really answer. Um, so I think, you know, the issue to CTE or the question of CTE. Um, and there's a lot of pretty amazing programs and I probably read that, um, um, uh. Large philanthropy contributions have been going towards that to make sure that high school students get that experiential learning. And that they can support, uh, you know, going to high school and then also doing a, uh, program and working on the side. And the proposal to have work count as a cap credit or a credit, depending on how many hours you work, to also recognize. Both the value of having a job and learning how to, um, you know, be on time, what a paycheck is, what taxes are, you know, all of that. Um, the social emotional learning that is required in being on the job. Uh, that that could now be counted as a credit to have work experience. Um, and working on programs, uh, that blend better. So for instance, the program that I'm working on. With Tacoma Public School is to get more youth engaged in childcare. So for those who, you know, we often focus on the trades or on doing things with your hands or, you know, the, the scientific side. Um, but for a lot of kids, they wanna work with people and wanna work with, you know, whether it's people with disabilities or children or elderly. And so working with them to get, um, their, their, the needed certification by going to community college. Um, having through the school, connecting them with the local childcare. And getting them to work in the afternoons or in the mornings at childcare, get the work experience. Um, be subsidizing their hours so that they're also making some money. And when they graduate, they're employable and they probably have a job right there already that places they were working. So there's a lot of those career connect opportunities that we're trying to, um, to support to get people straight into work and to have that experience.
Oh, the other example I wanted to, so I know like mega tie, uh, vision culinary arts center. Um, but particularly like the center of well, when you're talking about your podcast, is Joe Bryan and Bridge. Um, just a few months ago, like the board had had the pleasure of, um, recognizing. Remers Island students that came in, uh, we're naturally recognized at the New York time for podcasts. Uh, there was a Mercer Island reporter, uh, article when it came to, I think, like sports broadcast and other like, um. And it's, I think, like a crown jewel of what Mercer Island does. I mean, a few of the broadcasts, for instance, when it came to, uh, the podcast. One was on, um, Pakistani Indian cricket, a sport that, uh, united divided continents. Another was on Thai boat refugees. It's like very, you know, literally broadcasting stories. Of like the diverse community that Mercer Island is. I think also a very pragmatic, um, example. Of how a small district like Mercer Island can be a beacon and show how like unique and different programming, uh, can empower students. And it can be a laboratory of sorts. And like, we're a much smaller district. We only have one high school, one middle school, one elementary. Um, so I think these more unique, um, you know, pragmatic offerings, uh, can show it's possible in public education.
So I also want to add to what Reverend Greg said, said, is it very important to me that as we look at these opportunities that we, such as childcare. Uh, childcare today is a dead end job. It doesn't, there isn't a ladder to be able to go from being at this here to be eventually being a kindergarten teacher. And and traditionally, let's face it, many of these jobs are women and it's been okay or it's been what it is. Um, that's not okay. There has to be, when we, when we look at this and we encourage kids. To to get into these programs, it's important that we make sure that we provide ways to step up that ladder. So that that childcare worker without a college degree could someday be a, a kindergarten teacher or.
Or own their own childcare.
Or own their own childcare, she's talked about that before. I also want to tell you, Chris, I I thought this, this is really, I think, interesting. I had been on the board at Cal Poly for seven years. And so when you look at any kind of vocational technique, you know, training and technology. Uh, my sense is that, um, you're going to see AR and VR, uh, augmented reality, virtual reality, playing a very important role here. Because things change so quickly and that you can, you, no school district can stay on top of. The current technology, the current equipment. And so if you, if you have your kids, um, but you're using VR where what you, when you're engaged, you're actually using. The equipment of tomorrow, because we can't afford to do it otherwise. So I think that's gonna be really an inter- another interesting, uh, change that we're gonna.
And we'll see like Riot Games, um, supposedly, like, you know, coming to Mercer Island. The game, like, sort of going back to the podcast, um, which is the bridge, like showing, you know, what's possible. I think like Riot Games coming here in the district, it's an example where grants and opportunities for districts. That, you know, maybe are traditionally overlooked because they aren't high poverty, um, can can be a laboratory and 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 show it's possible. And then, you know, like they're coming, they adapt from the, and and.
Yeah, at some, at some point, I'd be happy to talk to you about the work that I'm doing with the creative economy. Um, because we're such a rich place for that and in, you know, kind of, that mix has changed from a position where we were a center of young production. And now we're seeing a lot of different things happen, but there is quite a bit of interest in, in, you know, really seeing that revive in the state of Washington. So we're looking at, you know, many of the games, the legends of what they do with it, Wizards of the Coast has been around forever. And those are morphing into, uh, you know, um, content that can be developed in a number of different ways. And I want Washington to be the center of that. Um, we have the technology, we have the talent, we have Riot Games now. Um, there's a lot of things that we can do. It'd be interesting to see if there are friendships for kids.
And Wizards of the Coast, I think like the D and D club on, I don't think it's one of like the biggest, so like, I mean, it's like an involved.
Right.
Community, but I mean, I think increased funding partnership will do even more. Um, we actually get received overall below like the state median. On a per student basis for funding. Um, yet we're still able to offer the bridge, like we're in a very high cotton living area. Um, but it's, it's challenging.
Yeah, we've got a lot of parents, we're a lot of, uh, wonderful, passive, that they bring to the community in many ways.
But, but yeah, and also at the end of the day, uh, we as a school system have to make these opportunities available equally to all kids on the island. And the, uh, so whether it's the bridge, whether it's band, and and whether it's academics, um. You know, to to be able to deliver these gaming experiences and VR. Advanced degrees tend to be required to build the foundation, but then make it easier and more accessible to everybody else. And without, uh, high level math courses, high level science courses. Um, education has been a field of liberal arts and, you know, we've got so much innovation happening in STEM right now. And at the same time, we see so many, most PhD candidates now are from outside the country, not inside the country, right? And and that's, that's a problem. Um, and with immigration going down, we have to be generating these candidates. Starting in elementary school and getting them thinking about, uh, STEM opportunities as much as liberal arts opportunities.
Well, I think there's this, uh, you know, we're talking about the budget of the state. There's this, uh, tension of course of, you know, in some areas, there might be a focus of how do we have more PhD students? And in a lot of places across the state that we're trying to fund is, how to make sure people come to school. With food in their belly or getting food at school and that they, uh, you know, hit the targets of third grade reading. And they have the social emotional learning skills and that they, you know, they have the appropriate basic, uh, needs. So as we're advocating for the things that, you know, we really make us unique, we also have to make sure that we're actually providing. The, the basics. And unfortunately, in a lot of places, that's still a challenge and. Um, and so there's always that, there's that constant tension of wanting to. Uh, be creative and wanting to reach for the stars and for making sure that we're bringing everybody up to, um, to a point where they can succeed and, um.
And then, like, to, well, I'm trying to tell, well, they're, they're, I think, they're also good with, fast for kids. I think when it's tied to programming. You see, there's overwhelming support within the community, um, when it's tied to concrete, or like going back to the prototypical school model. Um, you know, for like certain class ratios and perhaps adjustments that that need, you know, based upon like need, services and support. Um, I think that's quite different, um, than just like very crude. Like adjustments and just like funding, um, giving a lump sum to other districts that might be higher need, but not tying into programming. Um, or the services, but the much different effect. Um, you can have the same goal and outcome and aspirations in mind. Um, but having it tied in an actual program, a plan and data, um, it's all the difference.
We do have a lot of data. We try to be data driven, um, certainly, uh, sitting on the EOGOAC committee, which is the opportunity gap to understand. Uh, we're really quite data driven. At the end of the day, politically, very frankly. Um, we are not a state that is driven simply by one force in in, you know, kind of coming out of, uh. Olympia that says this is the way it is. Um, there's, there's a basis for what we put, what we put out and there are. Some districts are turning very technical. Some districts spend the money one way and some states spend it another way and it's based on their values.
Well, and their, and their needs and their, and their, you know.
We've got, we've got about ten minutes left in two talks, so I'll just, I'll just, the levy authority, uh, uh, question. And I, I think this speaks to the local control and, uh, we, we would love the three thousand dollars per student that. Seattle has, uh, but any type of increase there. And to speak to Dan's point as well. We've been very specific about what we fund, uh, when, when we get our levies out there. We, our levies continually pass well over seventy percent. Uh, so we've been very proud of that. But, uh, you know, very thoughtful about how we spend that money and to, to your, to your points, and the women. That we have to spend with values our community appreciates and likes, and I can see that happening in all districts. Uh, but we will, we definitely see a real funding gap here that's. Uh, but we will, we definitely see a real funding gap here that's gotten worse. Before we clearly, we had a much larger levy that allowed us to fund salaries and programs at a regional salary rate. Um, the ability to, to provide regional salaries that are competitive has, has really shrunk. And we've had to cut programs like a Spanish uh, program, uh, elementary school Spanish program to uh, to balance our budget and to be able to pay salaries in a pool of money that is decreasing, where there's uh, inflation. So pretty significant. I think we really need something to do there. Um, we're pretty upset that Seattle got this levy and other people equally needy districts. Not needing the same sense of food on the table. I appreciate that.
That what you brought up is, um, for the long term, the ability to attract a diverse workforce um, and staff for Mercer Island that is like, given the extraordinarily high cost of living. If we're bound by what we can pay, then that will select, like, we're, we're a teacher, but one will be more limited. And two, it will select those that are able to afford housing and keep them at drive. When they can receive the same salary or greater in an area where housing is a fraction of the cost.
No, but what percentage of teachers do you believe that teach your, that you're
So, uh, I have another numbers more, and I think that it's also, um, i- i- it's more age specific than that, like maybe twenty, thirty years ago, at least anecdotally. So like those that are, that are, that are in literature longer, um, are able to afford housing on the island. Where our youngest teachers frequently are not.
Yeah, yeah. I, I wanted to, that opportunity to, to really call out and uh, uh, friends communications, to pretend around those communications, uh, both, you know, around dignity this last time around and how great that was, and just even really explaining, I think, first communications to the community. Some of these issues of explaining why we have snow days, when there's no snow because our teachers and our bus drivers and our classified staff don't live on Mercer Island and they might live in North Bend or some other place where there is snow and they can't get here safely. And so really having more of, if you're talking about communications and your, your pre-bunk. Um, and I think, you know, uh, they were kind of doing a great job of bunking, pre-bunking and debunking. Uh, just wanted to give that, you know, just that, uh, great communication, but if I may, I'm just sorry.
Anybody, students, Andrew?
I, I have one question, um, and it really doesn't pertain to, to these four, but, um, I, I think it is still very important when looking at the student perspective and uh, I know last year when we were having this meeting, the, the legislator talked a lot about funding, uh, mental health counselors and, um, other support systems during COVID. Uh, and I, I guess just a question is that even though COVID is now, uh, more of something in the past, a lot of its effects are still being felt and just sort of what, what steps the legislator or you guys are gonna take to make sure that our, our one point four million students here have the support. Um, because I still hear from a lot of students, they, they feel, um, still behind and they still feel the effects from COVID. Um, social emotional or, or, you know, e- every kind of learning. Um, if they were locked up, um, in their houses and weren't able to get to school and just all of it. So just what, what steps the legislator might take or will take, um, to continue to support students.
Thank you for that question, Andrew. I think that as legislators get farther away from, uh, being a school themselves or having children who are school age, there is a, uh, a lack of understanding of the critical nature of children's mental health and teen mental health. And I think it's really our job and, and I appreciate you just continuing to rattle the cages of we cannot ignore what's going on for kids. And I think you add in concerns about climate change, you add in concerns about gun violence, you add in concerns COVID, you add about stress about the um, the economic environment, about being able to live anywhere near to where you live already. Now, when you come back from, um, college or you enter the workforce, uh, that there is just so much, uh, mental health and pressure on our children that we must, uh, we must address that. Uh, children's mental health issues are in my committee other than the ones that are in the education committee. And so definitely trying to both expand the workforce in mental health so that, uh, young people can actually find a therapist, uh, that school district can actually hire the, the school counselors and the mental health therapist that that we need, um, that you need, making sure again that we have the robust, um, nursing and other social emotional learning staff that we did increase last year and that will continue to grow over the next couple of years, reach more communities. Um, and just really supporting and recognizing that, um, that we have to do that. So there is a whole children's mental health package that, um, that it's been worked on over the interim that Representative Collins has been leading, that will come to my committee, that has a variety of, uh, of aspects. Actually, Representative Ty also from the forty first was the lead on the K twelve children's mental health component of that. And so I'm sure she'd be able to talk to more of the specifics. Uh, but really looking forward to continuing to elevate that, even if we talk about behavioral health as a societal issue across the state. Really just constantly being like, don't just clump kids into behavioral health and address behavioral health, we must address uh, children's mental health. So everything from expanding, uh, mental health consultation and childcare so that we get behavioral issues and we get mental health, um, concerns of kids and their young, um, their parents um, addressed early on so that we're trying to address those, to reducing, um, delays or getting kids the, the uh, interaction, inter, uh, intervention they need early to help reduce, uh, later onset. Um, to reducing access to, um, the, to, I guess, legal substances, to, to drugs, to other things. Um, really just kind of holistically, really looking at what are we doing to support kids as well as addressing gun violence and climate change and letting you know that we are hearing your voices and that it's not futile. Um, so I think there's kind of that, that component too of the direct and, and the interact. So I really, I'm grateful for you bringing up that issue. And it's definitely on the forefront of my mind.
Okay, uh, tied to what Andrew's saying, you made me think about, you know, sometimes we take care of the kids up until high school. But I just wanna make a point, because when I interview you, you're graduating. And actually, uh, as first-hand experience, um, at the higher education, people are seeing, you know, faculty are seeing the highest rate of mental health because problems because students are moving up and there's no services for them, similar from the K to twelve where they're more nurtured. And so how to make sure that our system, there's no, it's a seamless transition, that there's no gap in service. And so that would be really great to, and I, I was just curious about how do bills get lumps together, kind of seamless transition because, uh, Senator Simon, I love her idea of this before Leo. And I think that's something Mercer Island students would really, uh, do well in. And especially I keep saying that we're getting rid of, uh, SBTs and all these things and how do we able to see more of a comprehensive uh, uh, kind of products and actually, but as we're doing that, and I'm also thinking about, um, you know, communities that actually that will further increase the disparity for them because they don't have access to a lot of these things that they can put into there before Leo. So, uh, are those kind of bills tied to more of, you know, uh, job employment for youth? And are they tied to more innovative kind of, uh, social emotional kind of programs for kids, right? That they can be a part of. Because I feel like they're kind of tied together. I'm just curious, your process. Do you guys tie bills together to get them all together? Because it's not good to provide, uh, to push forward a bill but then we don't really have an infrastructure that they can even, yeah.
So I'll give you a perfect example of the yes and the no, I guess, would be my, would be my specific answer. That because we have the committee structure, things can be very siloed in that, you know, you're working through things that are new services early morning and then you might be doing something that kindergarten, uh, sorry, uh, K twelve, something that's higher ed and they're all in different committees. Um, you know, there's the, there's been an issue of, um, of some kids stuck at the hospital. I'm sure if you read the paper, right? So kids with developmental disabilities are not a health issue, then they're at a hospital and there's nowhere to, um, the families can't take them home and there's nowhere for them to go. And so they're at the hospital even though they don't need any medical attention. And it's a, you know, is, is a healthcare issue, the developmental disability issue. It's kind of a foster care, children, youth and family issue, it's, it's a, you know, family issue. There's right under there and it needs to be addressed. And there's a capital budget issue because there needs to be somewhere for those kids to go and live. And so this crossroads digital issue that is very hard to address um, in a collaborative way because things get very siloed. But that also is when it takes legislators to tell that story and to work together to, um, say this and then why we have the children's mental health work group, um, to be like, we need to move forward on children's mental health. And that's not just this one bill, it's this collection of bills. And if we really wanna make a dent, we need to do all ten of these. And so again, some of it is the, the crafting and the way we tell the story. Um, and some of it is, uh, you know, trying to get things through successfully all at once. Um, different silos and then also the funding. So it's a long
Somebody who spent a career as a system developer, um, system development as, as from the tech industry is not something that's generally known within the legislature. And yet unless you're hitting every touch point, you're not creating a solution. You're putting bandages on it. And, and I think that, um, I, I see us moving more to recognizing that, that these are systems. Um, I know when I was first running, uh, for office and I went to one of these sessions, it was very clear that our mental health supports aren't very much. We, we fix it, we address this problem, so you're good. And we need you until you fall in the gap and you get, it's really bad. And then we pick it up again. And so, you know, kind of that's not really the kind of solution that, that's a bandage. And, and so I think, I, I see us, or based on trying, I think we're trying to look at it holistically and, uh, identify all the touch points that really have to be addressed to create a solution that really changes, fundamentally changes what we're talking about.
And just if I could follow up to you on both Andrew's question and, and uh, number Dan's question, that another place that we're looking to put some investments is around youth development. Which is again, that space of supporting kids, uh, I think before they off the deep end, right? So with mentorship and after school programs, with, you know, arts programs, with the, um, you know, the ties to make sure that there are places for kids to go to find belonging, to find mentorship, to find other adults and other kids who, you know, interact with them, um, to, again, to build on their strengths, give them more assets and really bring that and make sure that kids have that across the state. That's not just in, um, areas that have, you know, kind of that rich and richness. Um, but that we're really supporting the board of the votes, the, the, um, YMCA's, our programs, the Bill of the Vote programs, the H programs. So again, that we're giving kids that real life experience, that mentorship, that opportunity to, to build assets and also to be a place where you can get a meal and our snack and some, uh, mental health services or some touch point and tutoring. Uh, so that's all another component that speaks to that systemic, you know, make sure that we get to help kids before they um, need even further, greater help.
I've been so involved with, you know, Borbia, because like I've been involved with it for years, but I really think that, that um, being, having access. In fact, in Finland, when I asked, it was, I was in Borbia and, and, um, as far as in Helsinki, and they said, well, it's, it's pretty good and getting better. But of course, when the nation, you know, really started supporting Borbia, we went to our rural communities first because they needed the most. Kind of different than what we have here in the United States, but it is the difference. Just because you live in, you know, Ponderay doesn't necessarily mean that you should be having an internship at Microsoft or at some other company or whatever. Um, it is, it's, it's easier to make that happen remotely than it is to have somebody here, you know, kind of raise a pig or a cow in their backyard. So, um, you know, it's not like you have all the choices here either. But, but I do think it's important that we think about access and, and support. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much for about five minutes old. I mean, no, no, we didn't have any following words while I was in talks.
Did we get your fourth thought?
We, uh, we, we, you did touch on legalization.
Okay.
Uh, we, I, I heard you talk about wanting to maintain legalization as well as repair our inflation uh, reason based on those boundaries. So I, I think we're pretty good.
Yeah, I think like the, the only other thing is like the current legislation is very tied to median home price. And it just seems that amongst other, um, sort of omissions, like OSPI, like I know is, I think, um, the, like the revenue department that's supposed to deliver like a report, like saying with the median home price, which was embedded is like the factor to actually consider for any rebasing regionalization. Hadn't yet been delivered to the legislator, wasn't mentioned by OSPI. Um, so again, like, uh, going back to best art for kids or other like programmatic change. Mercer Island, long history of like supporting that. But any changes to regionalization, it had to be common sense. Had to recognize like the, that difference in cost of living across the state and just be based in data. Like, uh, you know, it's like we can engage on it on like whatever terms are presented. Um, rather than sort of like more ephemeral and vague, um, and detached, like from that.
I only granted the big sign, like, that would be great. And then we also have to get a pass, which is politics. Like, yes, and then, yeah.
Sound vision, you know, this fortunately and rightly so, like funds state education and has overwhelming support as long as it's sensible and rational. Um, and I think sustainability is in prosperity for all. Like, we'll recognize that, like, um, like the, the, the task base that funds a lot of these programs that like come from the state like in bigger proportions than almost any other state in the country. And, 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 and rightfully so, uh, seventy percent of like funding for schools. Only Vermont and Arkansas have higher, or Alaska have higher coming from state sources. Um, in contrast to California where it's much more significant from local. Um, but I think to continue that support, what is necessary is just, it, it be based in that and, and, you know, in reason.
And, and, yeah, I'm just glad it's a great conversation. And I know that mainstream highlights, but is the overall being gonna be posted on the website or, yes, oh, there it is.
So, um, with that, thank you very much for your enthusiasm. Super nuanced and detailed answers, uh, even before we gave it up. And thank you much for your service, uh, to our community and to Washington State.
I mean, we, the legislature has given that you care about education. Two of the heads of education are from your community, not even from the district, from the community.
I bet you were wanting to, uh, like, slice and two graduates or one college graduate, uh, one day graduate and one all was graduated. Uh, so thank you for the graduation that, um, I can't pronounce it.
Thanks for all your support. I know I have colleagues that don't have friends in Illinois, but quite so helpful with public yes. So thank you. Makes much easier than us.
Okay, and with that, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I want you to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.